Counsel, staff, we're ready. We'll reconvene from closed session. I'll ask the attorney if he has any comments.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The City Council is in closed session this evening on conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, and there's no reported action on that item.
Okay, thank you. We'll now open the regular City Council meeting, 7:02, September the 24th. Liz, if I could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Haines, here.
Haines.
Powers.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
I'd like everyone to rise for a moment of silence. Silent prayer, please remain standing for the flag salute, which will be presented by Galt Scout Pack 84.
Will the audience please join me for the presentation of the colors? Color guard, advance. Prepare to post colors. Post colors. Will the audience please join me for the pledge of allegiance? Scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color guard, return to post.
Thanks, scouts. If we could have the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetricable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. This time we will do the agenda approval additions and or any deletions. Are there any, council, staff?
I have none.
None? Okay. Presentations, we have none. And we'll move into public comment. Liz?
Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the audience should address the council on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. You're requested you state whether you live within the Galt City limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Before I go into public comment, I just want to make sure, is the Rotary President in the audience?
No, she's not.
Yeah, I didn't get word that they were coming. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, we'll start with Kayla Cole. Kayla, I'm sorry.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Kayla Cole. I am from Galt, and I am speaking for Emerge Regional Coalition. This is Richard Kirby, an Otomus representative. We are part of Emerge, which is a youth advocacy regional team. There are three other youths involved, but unfortunately, they were unable to make it tonight. Emerge is a coalition of youth and adult community leaders from all segments of the community, working together to ensure that all youth in the greater Sacramento region enter adulthood and have a healthy development on the way. Through the Emerge Coalition efforts, the compact has been adopted by five City Council members, seven school districts, Sacramento County, and over 400 community organizations, varying from faith-based organizations up to businesses. My peers and I do regional research and try to find ways how community, nonprofit organizations, and youth can connect, as well as how to promote safe places. As a team, Emerge has identified a safe place as a physical place, such as neighborhoods, parks, centers, schools, et cetera, where youth and supportive adults actively engage in creating and maintaining a supportive and youth-friendly environment that promotes all necessities and opportunities for growth and enjoyment. All of us work with Jim Miller, who is in the audience today. He is the project manager for Emerge, and all of our youth work closely with him. Like I said, he is here tonight, so if you have any questions, please feel free to talk to him afterwards. You may or may not know, but through the efforts of Emerge and the Sacramento County, we have received the American Promise Award as one of the best hundred cities in the nation. The cities that are included in this award are Galt, Oak Grove, Sacramento, Rancho Cordova, Citrus Heights, and Folsom. To quickly wrap things up, I would like to let you know that next month, we, as the Emerge team, will present you, the city of Galt, with the National American Promise Award, as well as the Pillars of Promise Award, which will be given to 12 agencies and individuals for their work in supporting the youth, and I personally invite you all in this award ceremony. It will take place next month on October 14th, from 4 to 6, at the 24th Street Theater in Sacramento. Our Emerge team has been working very hard on this project for three years, and although this is still an ongoing project, we would love to share this experience with you. Just as a reminder, our Emerge Regional Advocacy Team will be coming back in the very near future with suggestions for policy and collaborative amongst organizations to provide more resources to our youth. Thank you for your time, and good evening unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Al Baldwin?
Al Baldwin? Yes, I am a concerned citizen of Galt, and yes, it is a community of character, and one of the things that's going on, I wanted to keep you informed on, is an organization that is called the Galt Horse Assisted Learning and Enrichment Program, which in short term is called Gallup. And we're going to have a meeting, probably, let's see, it's October 7th, it's a Thursday at 7:00 p.m. It's on C Street, 1018 C Street, Suite 210. It's where the elementary school district office is, right next to Autozone. If you're a volunteer, great. You want to join, just want to find out more about it, then you should be sure to come to the meeting. Gallup volunteers assist with a wide range of activities. All you need to have is the desire to help and make a difference. So what is Galt? What am I talking about here? What it is, is for challenged kids, a lot of them, where they have to get their confidence up, and by riding a horse, this does it. There's two people assisting, sometimes they can't sit on a horse very well. There's two on each side of the horse, there's one leading the horse, and these horses are trained, and they're not rough or anything, but the confidence that the children get when they get on these horses is amazing. If you see their faces after they get this confidence, it's like a grin two miles long. They grow up with it, they just enjoy it. They get to pet, they get to groom a little bit, and the parents are just so ecstatic because after they come back from doing these things, the child has changed. So if you'd like to get volunteered and do something, it's, nothing's strenuous, there's really no money involved, it's just being helpful and going to meetings. McCaffrey Middle School, on the east side of Galt, is where you can see a huge arena over there, and that's where all the horses, the bridles, saddles, and other things are kept in a locked compartment over there. So if you do happen to go to McCaffrey, maybe you're going to go for the Bird Festival next year, I don't know, but you'll see it over there, and it's in their field, and there's three arenas now, or two arenas, and a training area. So if you'd like to get involved, you'd like to make a difference, you'd like to help the children gain more confidence, just come on down to the meeting and find out about it. There's no charge, usually we have cookies, and it's really good, and water. So it's on 1018 C Street, Suite 210, it's October 7th, it's a week from Thursday, from where I'm speaking now, and it's at 7:00 p.m. So come on down and meet a lot of the people. Maybe you'll see some parents you know, maybe you'll see some people in Galt you know, because it's growing quite a bit, it's getting quite involved. I believe Project Ride in Sacramento is one organization that started something like this, Lowdy has one, I think Stockton's got one. So be a, get a piece of Galt and enjoy it over there. It's really cool, and I think you'll really enjoy it. And Kayla here is amazing. I went to a four-day training for the Youth Development Institute with her and many others from Galt, and it was just wonderful. There's so many things you can learn about your youth, your young adults. It's just amazing what they can do and the ideas they come up with, and how, they're our future, just to let you know, and maybe you already know that, but they're our future. And the more we can get involved with the youth and the young adults, the better our future is going to be. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Al. That's all the speakers I have under public comment. I do have some speakers under, like John. Everyone else I have for the probation. If there's anyone else under public comment, you can come up under John, after John.
John Slaughterback, I live in the city. I've been reading, and I could have waited for a little while, but I wanted to make it on a public comment. I've been reading for a couple of months now about the city of Belle, and I think citizens of Galt should be aware of what goes on in their city, just in case things are not quite right. I'm not saying there's anything wrong here in this city, but I believe the public needs to be aware of everything that the city does. There was one item on the agenda that I came to City Hall and asked about, and I asked who it was that brought this forward on the, for the discussion on redevelopment funds. And there's not much on the agenda that tells you much about it. And I think the citizens all know that redevelopment money comes from money that would have went to schools, police, fire, it comes from other entities, and we need to be aware of what we're doing with redevelopment. And this don't tell me anything, and it doesn't even tell me who brought this forward. And I would like to know what kind of changes we're making, and why, if we are making changes. Because I'm concerned about redevelopment funds, what we spend them for. We spend a lot of money on redevelopment funds. I think the fire department must have sued to get their money back. I'm not sure what happened there, but that's what it looks like the fire department did. I assume that was redevelopment money, because where else would it come from? But anyway, if somebody could address these issues for me and explain more of what this is about, I was told that it was house cleaning. Well, the city of Belle's done a lot of house cleaning, and I hope we're not anywhere close to that, so. If you'd explain that for me, I won't have to be here when you explain it, but somebody explained what we're doing with this redevelopment.
Thank you, John. Was that it, or do we have another?
I didn't put this, because I wanted to speak for Measure R. My name's Gene Downey, I live within the city. I just wanted to bring something forward that the Employment Development Department is doing in conjunction with armed forces, people coming home. I was wondering, I can pass this information along to you, you can check on it and see if we can't get a link to this on the city webpage for the veterans locally, because there is a person locally to help reintegrate servicemen into the community, help with benefits, unemployment, things like, of that nature. It's just a public service, and it's through the EDD, so, sorry about the creases, but I'll just pass this to you, and if we can somehow get a link maybe to this for the people locally.
Jane? Over at the Career Center, over by where Cafe Latte is, they have an EDD person over there that's in there at part-time, and I think that they're aware of it.
Yeah, they are, but I'd just like the city to participate, and I mean, by having a link on their webpage to a guy coming home, yes, he's been gone, he goes on the city webpage to see what's happening, what's going on, he sees that, he might click on it, could get some service. If it helps one guy, it's going to be helpful. So I'll just pass along, you guys can decide if it's-
You can just pass it up, make sure it gets over the city. Thanks, Jane.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Thanks. Okay. We have information consent agenda. Liz, if I could ask you to read off those items, please.
We have four items tonight. First item, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of September 7th, 2010. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, tuition reimbursement policy. And number four, approval of a proclamation for World Polio Day.
Any questions or comments from council? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept the consent calendar.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Haines?
Aye.
Councilmember Haines?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye. So what, scheduled matters, none, regular calendar, and we have the police department. I'll ask you to read that off, Liz.
Sure. Sacramento County Probation Department Memorandum of Understanding.
And the chief is coming forward.
I'm Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Good evening. Lauren Catalico, Chief of Police, and this is the second part of this discussion that was brought forward during September 7th, that council meeting. At that time, council heard public testimony regarding the use of Measure R funds to enter into an MOU with Sacramento County probation. The MOU proposed a 50-50 cost-sharing with probation, and would result in the city of Galt having a full-time probation officer assigned to Galt Police Department. Council requested at that time that staff return with alternatives to funding the MOU out of Measure R. After discussing alternative options and funding sources internally, staff developed a number of options for council consideration, with the various options listed in order of staff preference, with the preferred recommendation listed first. I will not read word for word all the different options here, but the preferred option is to hire a full-time police officer to serve on the Sacramento County CalMet Task Force, using the residual funds that are in Measure R. The stipulation on this is that we're acknowledging we do not have enough money to keep this position funded beyond three years, unless things change, but we also think there's a good chance that within the three-year timeframe, there'll be some attrition, or this person would probably land a job, or we would be able to find some grant funding for the position. The cost of this recommendation, by the way, this is totally in the Measure R expenditure plan, there would be no departure from what has already been voted upon and is already in the ordinance. The total for an annual cost for this, if we did this, which is what we're recommending, is $130,472 for a top staff officer with 10% incentive. We would obviously send somebody trained, not some brand-new employee, so we'd have to have somebody at the top step. And for a half a year, which is what about where we would be when we made this appointment if the council approved it, would be about a $67,565 expenditure to send this person to the CalMet Task Force. Again, that was, that is in Measure R, that option, but the kind of the risky part is that there's no guarantee that the person keeps their job beyond the three-year window, but that's, that's what we have funding for. The second option is for us to look for grant funding opportunities for probation, for the probation officer position. We don't have any in the wings, so we'd have to go search and see what we can come up with, you know, and meanwhile, we would, the proposal is do nothing. We, we're not in a position where we need to have something mandated, we're not short-staffed, we're fully staffed. This opportunity of this partnership presented itself as sometimes opportunities do, and so, you know, although it looks like a good opportunity, certainly not, there's no reason why we have to do it. The third choice would be to fund the probation officer position from revenues that we get from CDCR out of our rifle range project. That would severely delay the project, but it certainly is an option. The project's in EIR now, with a bunch of studies being done to make sure that it can move forward to the construction phase, and so it's a funding stream that's possible. It's not a preferred option, but it's certainly a possible option. And then the last option is to fund the probation officer from the general fund. This was not one that I had a lot of support for. I think that, for numerous reasons that the staff report lists, it's tough to do in the times that we're asking our employees to do more with less, to use that general fund money on a county employee, it'd be hard to sell, I think. And beyond that, I think that, you know, the, as stated in the staff report, the reserve is something that we are trying to protect, because we're just not sure what's coming next, what the California budget's going to do, and, you know, so I think that, you know, the city manager and the finance staff is trying to help keep our reserves healthy so that we have them should we need them in the future. Any of these are perfectly acceptable choices, the council can make a decision. Again, my first preference is that we go ahead and make an attempt to send the person over to CalMet with some, I'd say, at least reasonable certainty that we can probably find a full-time job in three years for that person. That concludes the staff report. Any questions?
Comments from council?
Considering the economic situation, I hate to pass up the opportunity of the probation officer, but by the same token, I think the recommendation to hire an officer for the narcotics task force is second best, but I'd like to know what benefits we would be getting if we do that, especially since we're saying, you know, we may only be able to keep you for three years.
Yes, there's several benefits. I mean, CalMet, this is California Meth, that's short for that, Task Force, it's state-funded, and what it allows you to do is it takes money from the state to use in your narcotics efforts, so, and that's much more money than we could provide. So we would be targeting mid-level and upper-level dealers, and so as we identify them in the Galt and surrounding areas, they would become the target, and as we all know in narcotics, there's a lot of smaller people who sell drugs and just to support their habit for their own use, but the mid-level and high-level dealers are the people that if you can catch those, you can really catch those folks, you can make a bigger impact. CalMet does not target street-level dealers, they only target mid-level and higher dealers, so, you know, two or three of those arrests could make a big difference for our community as far as drying up the sources in the surrounding areas. You also get the entire task force, which is right now somewhere between eight to 10 people, you know, they come to town when we need, when we have an issue, they come into town, they work as task forces do. The person we send there would get a lot of training, would develop a lot of expertise in search warrants and narcotics expertise. Having spent 40 years on one of these task forces myself, it was probably one of the best development phases in my career, so hopefully then when the employee comes back and we send another employee, if this goes on, that person brings back the training and expertise of the department, and we develop our own in-house, our levels of expertise go up. Like anything else, I think you need to evaluate it. If we're not getting our bang for our buck, or we seem to never have any cases happening in Galt, then we can always redirect the employee to come back.
Lauren, these task force, tell me a little bit about, I know what their capabilities are, and I like the idea of having a whole team of them come in, but they also have some equipment that we don't have. I would have to imagine that they have things, equipment for under, for surveillances and to handle the sweeps and the stings that usually go on in the larger cities, that we don't have that advantage, is that right?
They do. This is not a street-level task force, so they don't target for sweeps and stings as much as they do, but they have a lot of surveillance equipment, sophisticated undercover equipment, body wires, hidden microphones, and a lot of money. I mean, the way that these cases are made is that if the undercover officer is buying thousands of dollars without an arrest, that is instant credibility. You're not going to, you know, you're not going to have somebody questioning whether you're a cop if you just let a couple thousand bucks worth of money go. And that's what it takes to get to the higher levels, to build that trust, and that is, the state provides that money, the Department of Justice provides that money.
So they can bankroll the bigger, the bigger cases?
Sure. You're not working the smaller cases that we typically see in Galt, although they're important, they contribute, you know, small cases contribute to the decay of our neighborhoods and some of our issues.
Right.
But all those small dealers get their drugs from the middle-level dealers, and that's what this targets.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? We have some speakers, I believe, Liz just mentioned to me as you guys were commenting.
Okay, Rick Walters?
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. My name is Rick Walters, and I live in the city of Galt, and I'd like to read a prepared statement. After reviewing the Measure R draft ordinance and the comments by those involved in the Measure R initiative, I came to the conclusion that this ordinance concerning amend and repeal Section B was from day one designed and conceived to give our city council legal authority to amend and repeal. The ordinance is approximately 15 pages long and identifies revenues and tax codes, along with election codes. It appears to me now that the Citizens Advisory Group did not go line by line to discuss this ordinance, nor did they oppose the amendment clause giving our council full power over this ordinance. The intent of Measure R ordinance from the very beginning was to fund police patrols and to provide a six-year funding program to achieve that goal. This main component of Measure R ordinance was the heart and soul of the initiative. Nowhere in the ordinance does it allow our government to deviate and draw down finances to hire police officers that are not related to this main goal. The SRO and the NTF officer would be funded at a later date, not before. The public was aware that it would take time to fund the seven patrol officers and two dispatchers. That's why they wanted a lockbox funding mechanism. Nowhere in the ordinance does it allow this government to break that trust with the public. The police department's own talking points for selling this tax increase was, and I quote, "Nighttime is where most of the crime is committed. This is our utmost concern." The golden rule of this ordinance was to have police exposure and presence in and around our community. Parks would see bike patrols, and the community would have more officers per shift. The theme of the additional patrols would be the ability of our police to respond to more than one major incident at one time without asking help from other jurisdictions. I'm convinced that this council, if this goes on tonight, I'm convinced that this council and future councils will exploit the Measure R ordinance. As time goes by, this ordinance will not be recognizable. Finances will be amended and strained to a point of collapse, and future councils will once again ask the voters to approve additional taxes. After reading the Measure R staff report of 2008, I found a disturbing entry. This entry defines part of my conclusion. Quote, "Due to the draft nature of these documents, staff recommends not sharing these documents with the community at this time," end of quote. That's referring to the draft ordinance. That comment speaks volumes about the mindset of staff, and I am reminded by that statement that governments that have absolute power are very dangerous. So my challenge to you tonight is this, please live up to your word to fund the seven patrol officers and the two administrators. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Al Baldwin?
My second time around. Al Baldwin, and yes, I'm still concerned, live in Galt. I'm, you know, I was involved with this Measure R, Mary Lou, Don, where it was, it's sounded really great, and I still think it sounds great, even with a little bit of confusion here and there on maybe the public side. But first of all, I'm all for a probation officer, especially at those rates. I don't think you can fund it maybe through Measure R. And I'm all for a recommendation by our chief to get a narcotics officer. I think it's a great idea, if you can afford it. The challenge comes in is that if you're gonna make a decision tonight, you have one councilperson that's not gonna be here after November, you have a second councilperson that may be here after November but may not, so it's basically two people that's going to be here, and three new ones, maybe two and a half new people. Well, you're halfway through. You'll have maybe, you know, new people on the council. And what I'm suggesting is, for the narcotics officer, I would suggest you wait till you have a full council. And it wouldn't be so bad for the whole thing. Narcotics and bringing another officer on board, because then you'll have a full council, they'll have their input, they'll have plenty of time now between now and November to really look into this situation and come up with a good decision. So, it's plenty of time for them to investigate it, but if you need a probation officer now, if you have thirty days, two weeks, whatever, to do it, I'm for it, and I would suggest that if that's the time limit you have and you've got a due date, go for it some way. And I would suggest possibly, I hate to borrow money from one fund to another, but if you have to to get them, and it's that good a deal, and it's that important, and it's on the number-one priority list, then I would say, go for it. And that's just my personal opinion of it. I think we have an extremely qualified police chief, and I think we have very good council people, but I would like to see a complete council make this decision, if possible. I just think it would be right. And can't think of anything else right now, other than, no, I won't bring it up, I'll do it personally to somebody. But I would suggest that you strongly think about one hundred percent, or if there's a due date, go for the probation officer as quick as you can if you have to do it by that time. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Next speaker.
Dan Jimenez.
Dan Jimenez, and I live in the city. You know, this proposal is nothing more than an end run of the last proposal you didn't get passed at the last council meeting. You know, at that time, Jason said that there was currently, there currently wasn't enough money in Measure R to sustain an officer's pay for more than three years. Don Hanks said that, and was quoting the paper, saying, "We're two years away from having enough funds to hire a full-time officer." And now the chief proposed hiring a full-time narcotics officer, and that doesn't make sense. I mean, that's like closing your eyes and trying to hit a target. I mean, there isn't enough funds in there for, to sustain any kind of an officer for more than three years, and who's to believe in these times that money's gonna roll in to sustain that, not unless you figure the fairy money godmother is gonna show up somehow? And that's not gonna happen. And, you know, it just doesn't sound like a good idea at all. I have to be really honest here, this whole situation really stretches the brownies of credibility. If you were to ask anyone who voted for Measure R, what would you prefer? A full-time probation officer or narcotics officer, or a full-time patrolman guarding our streets and our homes at night? You know what the answer would be, and there's no doubt in your mind, what the voters would say they wanted. You know, in times like this, it really, it just really resonates that it's no wonder that across our country, people are fired up and fed up with their local leaders because they feel they've been lied to on more than one occasion, and they feel they want them out of office because they can't trust them anymore. We voted for a certain goal, and now, you know, we can take a left turn here, we can take another left-hand turn. You know, in a couple of years, these turns are gonna take us over there and our goal's over here. You know, I think Vice Mayor Barbara Payne hit it right on the mark when she was quoting the paper, and I was here that night. Galt Vice Mayor Barbara Payne led the objections to use Measure R funds, saying it attacks the integrity of the council to go against the voters. You know, that pretty much sums it up. And it shouldn't be what you want, you want, or any of that. It should be what the voters believed they were getting when they voted for this. And just in closing, I'll say this: Tonight, your vote's gonna clearly define what this council is all about, but more importantly, it's gonna define you as an individual.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Mike Singleton.
Good evening, City Council, staff and citizens of Galt. My name is Mike Singleton. I just wanted, I'll make it real brief. I would like to, I am in favor of this probation officer, and for a number of reasons. We are getting an experienced officer for half the price. We've got thirteen, fourteen years' experience. We have an officer who knows the habits of gang members, knows how to identify them, and it's only going to, we're getting a great deal for our buck. It's not only gonna protect us as citizens, it's gonna protect our kids, you know, going to and from school, because I know some kids have had issues with gangs, going to and from school. I think that I also have worked on Measure R, and I don't see this deviation at all. This officer is a probation officer who carries a gun, handcuffs, and has arrestable duties. So, he will be patrolling. He can enforce any laws that he sees as broken. So, I really encourage you to support this, going for Measure R. I think our money is well-spent, especially in these times. We are getting a well-experienced officer for the money we're having to spend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Gene Davenport.
I would first like to address the council, the chairman of the Measure R Oversight Committee, and a separate five minutes for Gene Davenport, the citizen, because I think it's important to take me off the clock, because the point is, I have points to make, and I think it would be a disservice not to get them out. So, let me start with, the Measure R Oversight Committee met-
How about this, can you summarize everything in five minutes?
I doubt it, but I'll try.
We'll give you five.
Thanks. What a guy. The Measure R Oversight Committee met on this agenda, as it came rapidly. It came forward, we had a special meeting for it. And it was presented by Jason, the chief, and a few other staff people were there. And it was explained to us, and I believe, I believe, regardless of what people think or say, it falls within the boundaries of Measure R. I think you're shortsighted not to look at this for what it is, because there are items in the Measure R ballot measure that are no longer available to us. We can't use them, we can't, Sacramento County doesn't provide them, so they're not there for us to consider. So, as we collect the tax money, and we reach a certain plateau, and the money's not coming in as it was expected, so we sit on it rather than hire an officer. An opportunity comes up for sixty-two thousand dollars for us to get a person in this city for a year. It baffles me, and I mean, common sense should dictate how we make our decisions regardless of what people think it says, because at these Measure R Oversight Committee meetings, they are posted publicly. We have yet to have any citizens come to it. Alls we have is staff, we go over the reports, we deal with what we do, and we do it openly. So, to say things are happening behind closed door is offensive. And if you have a problem with it, start coming to meetings. Stop being critical and come. That being said, I think this item is disingenuous to the process, because this did not come before the Measure R Oversight Committee. It has not been debated by the full panel to give a recommendation to the city council. So, you're acting without a recommendation from the Measure R Oversight Committee. What was brought forth and what created the firestorm was a probation officer. I think you really need to take some advice from the attorney on this, and what's being offered to the city of Galt. It's an opportunity, one, to save money, to bank money, to have money down the road so we can hire those full-time officers. What's to say that this part-time probation officer won't lead into a full-time position? Secondly, he is going to be under the direction of the chief of police of the city of Galt. That makes him a sworn officer to the city of Galt in every sense of the word. So, not to consider that as a viable option is really disingenuous to what we pass. I voted for Measure R. I want this as a citizen. This is a deal, this guy's gonna go to both high schools, not just one, he's gonna do work in the community, he's already got connections in this community, and he's gonna expand on it. It makes no sense for us not. And I disagree with anybody saying that this goes against Measure R, because I think the lawyer would've stopped us from even taking this public. And at no time did we ever get sneaky about this, and I'm offended. And if somebody thinks we were sneaky, come please address me. I have some words I would like to share with you. It's really, it really offends me. So, that being said, you're not gonna break the public trust at all. What you're gonna do is show the public the common sense approach that we need to take in these situations and the times that we have. And right now, everybody's saying, "There are dire times, we have no money." For sixty-two thousand dollars, we get a guy for a year. Give me a break. Come on, think about this. And if it is against the law, we can rescind it. We're on a month-to-month MOU. It can be stopped. It can be stopped before we go forward, but we need to think about this openly and with common sense. You're not breaking your promise, Don, you're not. You need to look at this for what it is. Look what the measure was intended for. We're doing what the intent was. You might've made a lot of promises, but let me tell you, the promise to the city that you made when you ran for office is what you need to step up for. And I honestly believe you need to reconsider what you decided at the last meeting, and table this, to send it back to the Measure R Oversight Committee if this is what you wanna go forward. I don't think you should take any action on this tonight, because we're there for a reason, and it's transparency and it's openness. And by voting on this tonight, you literally stepped over what we're there for. And there's another Measure R committee man here tonight, I don't know if he'd like to address you or not, but for the sake of the city and what we're doing, there's gonna be people that are not gonna like it. There's gonna be people that are gonna love it. That's why you guys are up there. And, you know, we need to consider that. But this probation, this probationary officer is a good idea for us. I really just think we need to consider that. And don't take this officer out of the general fund. If you want to take that probation officer, officer out of the general fund to save whatever you need to save, I think Jason could find sixty-two thousand better than he could find two hundred and something. That's just my opinion.
Thanks, Gene.
Thanks.
Do you want to-
Any questions? No, I just, I mean, I'm really, I'm-
Doesn't all need the door.
Pardon me, no, I'm not, no, I'm just disappointed that people that are critical have never come to our meetings, you know, and that's what this, we're here for, because, I mean, if we're gonna be critical to you about things that we don't like, we need to voice those, and that's why we were very adamant about making sure this came out publicly before it came to you. And I think we did, you know, we did right by the citizens by making sure that happened. But I just, I really hope you reconsider what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Thank you. Any other comments?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Comments or questions from council?
I would like to ask our city attorney, would it be appropriate to send this, to table it and send it back to the Measure R Oversight Committee? Or would that have to be agendized on a future meeting?
It's certainly within your discretion to table it and send it back to get a recommendation from the Measure R Committee, but it's not a legal obligation. It's within your discretion to move on the matter this evening if you so desire.
At this point, I would like to make a motion that we send it back to the Oversight Committee. I think we have many committees and commissions that we look to for recommendations, and for whatever reason, this didn't go through that process, I think we should correct that at this point.
Before we make that motion, Barbara, can we get an opportunity for the rest of us to make a comment?
Sure. Let me just make a comment on that, because it did go through the process. We brought this item before the Oversight Committee, and the last council, the council directed specifically to just come back to the council to hear the additional options, and so that's why we didn't go back a second time to the Measure R Oversight Committee, but they did hear it the first time around. But certainly, the council wishes to go back and provide different direction than was provided at the last council meeting. We can certainly do that.
Jason, would you clarify that again? So, this issue has been before the Oversight Committee?
When we took the probation officer position before we took it to council on the first time, we took it to the Measure R Oversight Committee.
Okay.
But it wasn't the narcotics task-
Correct. These new options were not presented to the Oversight Committee.
This put me at, there was no, there was no explanation of what it was. It was brought up in a very generalized manner. We talked about money, and that was it, so.
We talked about the probation officer position.
Yes, the probation officer, yes, not this.
We didn't talk about these other four, four options.
Don, I'm sorry, Barbara, will you, any other comment?
No, I think Don wanted to make-
No, I understand why they wanna fill this position, because it is important. Drugs is one of the primary reasons we have the crime in the community, and the idea is to go after the big fish, the guys who are really distributing in the streets, so that you can nip that in the bud. But also, at the same time, we had, one other thing, we're getting on to that, it is important that we do have a regular stream of revenue to fulfill the needs or to be able to pay for this position ongoingly. And it does concern me a little bit that we would only have it for three years, and we are doing it with the contingency that either somebody would retire or move on, or that we'd be able to fill the position, and that I understand. But another thing we need to keep in mind is that when we, when we were promoting Measure R, and when we were pushing to get this passed by the citizens, one of the things we had stated was, we would fill these positions, meaning patrol officers, before we would fill, before we would do anything else but the revenue. That's what we clearly stated. So, we said we'd have seven police officers we would hire, and we would have those on the streets. That would be before we would do anything else with those positions. And even though I see that we're working well within the spirit of Measure R, and I think it is in the best interest of the community if we were to move in that direction, but at the same time, I don't think it, in my opinion, we can send it back, but until I hear something, a better argument, I don't think it's in the best interest to support it at this point, because my biggest concern is that the trust of the community is more important to me at this point. And we made a promise, and I think we, and I think we should keep that commitment until we fulfill it before we go off to or consider any type of other option. And I think that's something we all should be thinking about before we move forward with these type of proposals. And I really had to think about it after the last meeting, and I had to go back and look at the Measure R proposal. So, that's where I would stand on it, unless I hear something overwhelming information that tells me otherwise. I think that's where I would stand on it at this point. And I think it's important that I explain that out at this time and not have people in suspense as to how I'm viewing it at this point.
Are you referring to the probation officer position or the narcotics officer?
The narcotics officer position. It is in the Measure R, we had talked about it. But what we said, as I recall, was, is that we would fill those positions for the street officers, the patrol officers, before we would, before we would use the money for any other type of position, because we wanted officers on the streets, and that's really how we promoted it. And that was the understanding, I believe, that the citizens had interpreted this. Al, you correct me if I'm wrong. So, and, no, I know, and this, and we could get into a debate about this, but my point is simply this, is I think we have to fulfill that commitment before we can move in another direction. And if there's anybody who would like to fill another position, get an officer on the street, that's me. But I don't wanna do it at the risk of losing that trust of the citizens, because the next time, or if there's ever another need for a proposal that we have, or at least I'm gonna support, I want people to be able to look back and say, "You know what? He kept his word." You know? And I think that's more important to me at this point.
Make sure that the council is clear, and the community is clear on what was actually approved in Measure R. It was for the first six years, had specific funding earmarked, as Councilmember Hanks suggested, that there were two dispatch positions, seven officer positions. Among those seven officer positions were- Among those seven officer positions was, were five patrol officers.
Right.
One school resource officer, and one narcotics, narcotics task force officer. Those were the positions that were approved in Measure R. Um, and the intent was, was never the order in which those, those seven positions would be filled. In fact, we've filled the school resource officer position-
Right.
-already. And so if the intent was to fill those, those patrol officer positions first, we've in fact already violated that because we have the school resource officer position filled.
Right.
And so, the what's being proposed tonight is that the narcotics task force officer position was clearly articulated as one of the very first priorities in Measure R.
You're correct in what you're saying, but it's also how the public interpreted, how they interpreted it. And when we made the calls and when we knocked on doors was, is, one of the biggest selling points was, we wanted to get more officers on the street and in public view. And that's really what we were pushing. But you're absolutely right. It is well within the spirit and it is within the design of how Measure R was pushed. But I also have to step back and take a look at what the, uh, what the public's expectations and interpretation was. And that was to get these officers on the streets before we filled the other positions. And you're right about one other thing. The school resource officer, you're right. That should never have been filled before we put these other officers on the street. That's what he said? But, that's okay. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'm just expressing myself. And I'll leave it to Mary Lou, if she has anything she wants to share.
Okay. Mary Lou?
Oh.
Did you have a comment?
Uh, no, I'm just, uh, listening to these, uh, the, uh-
You need backup, chief? Go ahead, Mary Lou, sorry.
Um, you know, this is a difficult one. Uh, last, last week, what they wanted was clearly not in Measure R.
Mm-hmm.
This week was, the chief wants is in Measure R.
It is.
And, you know, I, I was on Measure R, but not, I have to speak truthful, not as intent as everyone was, as five of this, one of this, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
When I got, when we got down to the, uh, three officers and then we did the school officer, I personally didn't see that we were violating anything, you know? And it, it is a general perception, and we talk about what's, you know, and, the Galt Herald, which is, you know, not my favorite paper, I had a gap, but, you know, they did a survey and fifty-six of the people said for the last one, that we're fine to go ahead with it, we need what we need now.
Right.
So, we're kind of in a dilemma. Last year, last week was perfectly clear that they were not in Measure R.
Right.
This one, the officer is in, um, Measure R. And we're, funding is really critical. I know that because I work with funding all the time. And that sometimes you just have to go for what you know when the time is right. And if there's a way you can get someone else to pay for half of something, that's like a pretty good deal. So, I don't know why not on it.
Okay, I'll put my two cents in. Uh, the Measure R fits into the narcotics task force officer. Uh, we used to have a officer that was involved in that. Uh, this city used to be number one known throughout the western region, not only California, for two things. And due to funding, we went away from it. That was narcotics and that was gang. They used to have seminars. Our people used to go and teach not only local agencies, but federal and state agencies. I believe this is an opportunity. It fits in the guidelines. I'm for chief putting on the officer through the narcotics. But I don't think we have four votes.
I would like to ask one more question.
Sure.
After listening to the discussion, uh, what was the scope or the description for the Oversight Committee? Does anybody know? Can they clarify what your job was? And try to associate with where we are right now with this.
Is General White, General White with the Oversight Committee what?
Well, I'll tell you exactly why, Master. Was it in the description of the Oversight Committee to review pretty much anything that happened with the Measure R money, other than hiring the patrolmen exactly as it was said?
This is how it, it was broken down to us and how we've operated. And I think Mary Lou can, she can attest to this. We meet budgetary items and any agenda item that the chief brings forward as it pertains to Measure R, um, tax money. And they budget things and he hired the officer. He said, "This is where we're going." He hired the dispatcher and patrol officer, and then he said, "We're gonna get the high, high school resource officer next." And then our budget is, you know, he, he warned us a year ago, "We're not getting the money that we anticipated." So, we're looking at this thing from how we, how we're gonna go forward. And that's basically how we go, I mean, he's the director. And he brings these things to us, and then we, as a committee, talk about them and make any amendments. Cause we do make amendments to what, to his ideas. And he does take those into consideration and implement them sometimes. And I think it was important, when this item came before you last week, the way it was intended. It was a one-year proposition and not a full-time officer. But as it pertained to the Measure R Tax Committee, I feel, it fell, fell within those boundaries. And as it was explained by Jason and the chief, we, we, uh, we discussed that, and it was the unanimous decision to go forward with the probation officer. Barbara, anything else? Can I answer your question?
Uh, well, this current one is what I was asking.
Well, this current one, we didn't talk about.
You haven't talked about it?
No. We, we, Jason, you might've brought it up. We did not discuss it.
You're correct. We did not talk about these options. Um, and technically, the Measure R Oversight Committee is tasked with reviewing the expenditures to make sure the expenditures are consistent with Measure R. Um, so, there's no legal obligation that these types of, of decisions be brought back to the Measure R Oversight Committee, although it doesn't mean that they can't be brought back to the Measure R Oversight Committee.
Right. And, and we understood that when we volunteered our time to, for this committee, that we were strictly there as a kinda oversight, nothing official. But nonetheless, we were asked to give our time to look at these things from a citizen's point of view. And to make recommendations as needed. And since this started, the chief and the city staff and everybody, they're very open to everything that we've talked about and what we've recommended. And they've been patient with us, and I think vice versa. So, I think to the intent of it, if you wanna vote on this tonight, I guess legally, you can do whatever you want. But, we have followed the book, how it was supposed to be designed and how this, this measure was implemented. Everything came before us as it was put forward. He had already knew the officer, the last officer he hired. He knew the guy. They always already hired him. But technically, he came to the Measure R Oversight Committee, and that's how we brought it to the city council and whatnot, so.
And, and that's why I was suggesting to just go back to the Oversight Committee.
I, I wholeheartedly agree with that. I think we should, I think we should give the community time to digest this, cause this is hot and heavy.
Gene, if I could ask you to give the podium to the chief.
I absolutely will.
He's standing back there with his hand up, so. Chief?
Um, just, just a couple of clarifying points. And, and I realize this debate's gone out of it, but that's what democracy's about. So, everybody, um, I respect everything that's been said. I, I'm, and I'll, we can live with, you know, the police department will live with the council's decision. Um, so, that's not an issue. Um, I don't want the record to start getting muddied about people saying there was some promise that we would have seven patrol officers. I mean, I worked my tail off along with others on that campaign. And what Jason has said is the truth. There were seven officers, including one narcotics guy and one SRO person.
Right.
And that means there's five officers that worked patrol. Not seven, and then you go get extra. Um, and we've never, you know, I've been blessed by the council and by a city manager who's never tried to dictate to the chief of police what order we need these people in. Um, I go to the community and I go to the meeting and I figure out, are the drug issues overrunning us, or are the gang issues, or is the SRO the pressing need of the community right now? And that's what you pay me to do, is to make those calls. Um, and, you know, I run it by the, um, my Oversight Committee, but I certainly, you know, it certainly isn't always unanimous of support. We had members that wanted that SRO up front, first thing, because that was the most important thing in their mind. And we hired three police officers before we got to the SRO. Um, so I, I just, again, I can live with however the council presents this thing going forward. It is not the intent, um, of the Oversight Committee to approve of which position I'm going to fill next. Um, I think it's a courtesy that we give them, and I certainly don't have a problem going back to them if that's what the council directs. But, um, that's not how we've done it thus far. Um, and when we had the money to purchase a, a new employee, we've done it, and I've decided which one it's gonna be.
And that's what I didn't understand. I thought I, I thought what I was hearing was up until this, it has gone, for whatever reason, courtesy or wager-
But it really didn't. I mean, we filled three positions without asking anybody. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Now, um, having been on the committee from day one, um, the Oversight Committee was just to see where, let's keep an eye on where the money was going. So, we, we met every three months. You, you had already hired whoever it was, and all we did was take a look at what was coming up. It really didn't have anything to do with, you've discussed with us, you know, what you were doing, but, um, no, it wasn't up to us to say who was first or what was. Usually, we looked at and was wa, were watching the budget after the thing, the people were in place. And we were just meeting once every three months to really check out the checks and balances of the budget.
Let me just conclude by saying, I think that the probation officer suggestion, although it's controversial, was what you pay your city staff to do, is to explore an opportunity when one comes up. It may not be the right opportunity. It may not be the affordable opportunity. Some citizens may not think that's what we should be doing, and that's their right, and I respect that. But certainly, there isn't any desire here to full-fast one. If there was, I'd have done it in the dark and we wouldn't have told anybody, and it had just been there. And, you know, we aired this with the newspaper. We've invited people to the council meetings. Um, you know, I, I'll respect the will of the council and however you, you folks direct us to go. But, um, you know, of all the things that I, I don't like, I don't like being called a sneak, and I'm not. So, hopefully, that's not what people think.
No.
Yeah, but thanks.
Thanks, Laura.
And one last thing is, is what Mary Lou said. I know, I know. But, but the point is this, though. Okay, but look at, the point is this. If you're gonna expound on this, what he said, to what Mary Lou-
Gene.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, I, we've all kinda said how we felt.
Well, can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
You know, we all have differences of opinions. We all have understandings of what we were doing while we were everywhere, you know? The silliness of trying to say, "I'm right, you're right, blah, blah, blah." You know, look at, see what, when the Oversight Committee was appointed, see what the definition of the Oversight Committee was. You know, if we got a real problem with what that was, just go back and see what it was. As I interpreted it, it was just to look at where the money was going. But, you know, a lot of things are open to interpretation also.
Mayor, okay. You're right. The Oversight Committee was to ensure that the money was being spent what it was intended for. And, and really how we had sold that was that we would fill those five, uh, patrol officer positions before we'd fill any other position at the time. And that is true. But in this case, and, and, and there's no doubt in my mind that everybody who spoke today has the city's best interest in mind. So, you know, there's no right or wrong answer here in this. And we are in a gray area, but nonetheless. Uh, so that was the promise. And, and having said that, and we have not met that, that commitment yet, I think it is reasonable for that committee, the Oversight Committee, to discuss this and look at it and review it in, in more detail, simply by the fact that it, you would be, in, in a sense, you are deviating from what was promised. Does that make sense?
You're saying?
Well, I think that's interpretation also.
Yeah.
Cause like, you know, we're all, everybody's in-
I, I think I interpreted it pretty good, cause I think I, I was on that committee for two years.
Right, I know, but-
And, and, and anybody who was on the committee, and the people who've been up there speaking, whether it be Dan, uh, Rick Walters, or, 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 or Al Baldwin, were also out there helping and, uh, in many ways, trying to get this passed. And that's how we all talked about it, and that's how we sold it, and that's how we interpreted it. And I'm not trying to deviate myself from it, uh, but I, I, I think when you make that promise or you've sold it on that, under that premise, you really should keep your commitment. So, that's it.
How about this, how about this as a compromise? Cause I'm hearing from two council members, I believe, and Barbara and Don, you tell me if I'm wrong. I think you would prefer that it go back to the committee with the chief and it be brought back. So we would continue it, or you won't, is that what you're saying? I mean-
Yeah, I would like to see it go back and discussed in a little more detail.
That's what I think Barbara's original motion was.
She did, and I agree with her.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion, I'll just ask for a motion. I'll ask, propose the question.
I already made the motion.
I'll second it.
Well, re, restate it, please, at this time, if you could, please.
Um, I move that we send this recommendation back to the Oversight Committee and hear their, um, recommendations.
And I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Yeah? Call for the vote, uh, sorry, roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Haines?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Shobson?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, thank you all, everyone. Appreciate it, your comments. Public Works Department?
Central Galt Interchange Project Award of Construction Contract.
And our staff report?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, the next one before you is a resolution that has five parts. The first is a recognition that you denied the bid protest by RGW Construction. The second is that you weigh the irregularities in Tiger Construction's bid regarding submitted subcontractor information on the grounds that such irregularities are immaterial. The third is that you authorize the city manager, manager to execute a contract with Tiger for construction of the Central Galt Interchange Project in the amount of twenty million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand ninety-three dollars and forty cents. The fourth is you authorize me as the Public Works Director to accept the completed improvements within the city right away and issue the notice of completion upon completion of the improvements. And the last is that you authorize the city manager to execute Amendment Number Twelve to the Engineering Services Contract with Omni Means in the amount of eighty-four thousand eighty-two dollars for additional engineering services for the interchange project. Part one of the report deals with the construction contract award. The city received seven bids for construction of the project. They ranged from a low bid of twenty point nine three eight million dollars to a high of just over twenty-five point seven million dollars. They range from a low bid of twenty point nine three eight million dollars to a high of just over twenty-five point seven million dollars. Uh, the low bid was received by Tiger Construction of twenty million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, ninety-three dollars and forty cents. RGW submitted the second low bid, they were approximately one point five million dollars higher. The third bid was twenty-two point eight million dollars, and a full bid summary of all seven bids is included in the agenda package. The engineer's target estimate was twenty-five point one five million dollars. These were very competitive bids reflective of the economy. Uh, these bid prices do include the additive costs. If you recall, we brought back to council some additive alternates for architectural embellishments. These prices do include all of those upgrades to the projects. Bid documents that were prepared for the project require that bidders submit a subcontractor list along with their bid. The intent of this list is for the contract, the bidders to list their subcontractors so we can see who's doing at least thirty percent of the work. The prime contractor has to do at least thirty percent, with his own forces or with his own equipment. The intent of this requirement is to ensure that we have a vested interest in the prime contractor and to prevent job brokering. The specifications also require the bidders to, either with their bid or within twenty-four hours, to submit additional supplemental detailed information regarding the subcontractors. This included specific bid item numbers that were subcontracted, and percentage of each bid item subcontracted as it related to that particular item that was being subcontracted. Uh, the specifications lastly provided, if the contractor provided, or failed to provide this information timely, their bid was deemed non-responsive. Tiger Construction submitted, uh, the subcontractor list along with their bid that had general information relative to the subcontractors, the name, address, and general description of the work that was to be performed. Had no dollar values or percentages. They subsequently submitted information that had additional descriptive information about the subcontractor, the amount of the subcontract, the percentage of each subcontracted total was of the total bid, but they did not include the individual bid item numbers of the subcontracted work or the percent of each bid item that was subcontracted. RGW submitted the general information along with their bid, and they also subsequently submitted subcontractor information. Uh, they did submit the correct individual bid item numbers, they did submit the correct percentages of the work, however, their submittal was over an hour late past the deadline. Uh, in summary, Tiger submitted incomplete information, but they did so timely. RGW submitted complete information, but it was late. Uh, RGW, the apparent low bidder, submitted a protest of the award of the bid to Tiger on the ground that Tiger's incomplete submittal ended their bid non-responsive. Um, they asserted that this gave Tiger an unfair advantage over the other bidders. Tiger also submitted a bid protest of RGW's bid likewise claiming that they had an unfair advantage. Tiger's protest was, because it was too late, uh, was rejected. Staff's position is that RGW's late submittal of the supplemental information did in fact give them an advantage over the other bidders in that they had additional time to do so. As such, their bid is materially non-responsive. Uh, staff's position is that although Tiger did not submit the specific information that needed to do timely, they did not enjoy an unfair advantage. The reason for this is that we were still able to determine that Tiger was going to do more than thirty percent of the contract work by their own forces. We were able to obtain that information based on the information they did submit, which is the intent of the information in the first place. As such, staff suggests these deviations are immaterial and can be weighed by the council. Therefore, staff's recommendation is that council weigh the deviations and award the contract to Tiger Construction. As an alternative to this recommendation, the council can reject all bids and direct staff to rebid the construction contract, although this alternative is not recommended due to possible increases in the bid and further delays to the construction project. The second part of the agenda tonight is the Engineering Services Contract Amendment with Omni Means. Back in two thousand and seven, council awarded Contract Amendment Number Four to Omni Means. This was for the final design and the bidding and right of way acquisition. It was essentially a new contract for the second stage of the project. Uh, it was about two point six million dollars. At that time, staff intentionally left some items out, such as right of way acquisition, to add it to the scope at a later date. Over the course of the final design, uh, we had found some additional services were necessary, so council and staff, uh, approved Amendments Five through Eleven. And the, the details of those amendments are included in your agenda report, I won't go through them all now, as well as the dollar amounts. In two, in April two thousand and ten, Caltrans signed the final plans and basically marked the end of the design phase and into the bidding and construction phase. Uh, along this was certification of FHWA and the final decision of the right of way acquisition. More additional unplanned tasks were necessary due to certification and bidding procedures, changes in policy, and requirements from Caltrans, FHWA, Secog, and utility companies. Omni Means did additional work on our behalf to keep the project moving forward and submitted a bill in the amount of about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for this extra work. Some of this included the air quality conforming analysis that was required by Secog, uh, value analysis and bidability review comments. Uh, even though this, these comments and changes to the plan's cost some money, they saved approximately six point one million dollars in estimated construction cost. Uh, they also did found utility coordination. In order to move the project along, we actually did the work the utility companies were supposed to do, which just weren't getting to. And there were other miscellaneous right of way certifications, funding, and encroachment permit work that was done. We ultimately negotiated a reduced fee of eighty-four thousand, eighty-two dollars for this work, and we're asking that council approve that amendment. There are direct fiscal impacts in the amount of the construction contract in the amendment as a result of these actions. Uh, we're recommending that council approve both, and there are adequate funds in the current CIP program and fiscal budget to support both these recommendations. This point concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We suggest that the council, uh, solicit possible testimony from respective bidders and members of the audience. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the... Go ahead, I'm sorry, Steve.
Um, Mr. Mayor, my recommendation, that's to add on to, uh, to Greg's conclusion, is that you first, uh, provide RGW, which is the party that filed the protest, an opportunity to address the council.
That's what I was gonna ask, are they here tonight?
Is there anybody from RGW present in the audience that would like to address the council?
Okay. Then...
Mayor, the second point, I'd, uh, recommend that you, uh, offer Tiger an opportunity to provide additional information if they so desire.
Anyone from Tiger here?
Good evening. My name is Clyde Hamilton, I'm the estimator for Tiger Construction. I bid the project through the company. Uh, worked very diligently on it to get the best possible price for the public. We have many employees and families live in the area. We feel that we, uh, we did have a minor irregularity. Uh, that was my error. Uh, it did not affect our bid, did not give us any advantage. Uh, we very much would like to build this project for the city. We think we're the best contractor to do so. And, uh, that's all I really have to say. I do understand, however, there was a, a letter from the other contractor, RGW, sending their protest and wishing us well in the construction of the project. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Any members from the audience wishing to speak on this item? Thought you were gonna speak, Ted.
I think this should have been Oversight Committee, it should have looked over this thing.
Thank you.
I would just like to congratulate staff and the persistence of many years and many councils to get this thing to the point to where it's at. The quicker that, uh, they, uh, have the bid, and there's a piece of machinery out there, the better off this city's gonna be. Even though there is an anomaly here, I would move as quickly as they could, because this is something that cities needed probably for twenty-five years. Now, here's the thing, this is not gonna be easy. There's gonna be a lot of trouble, there's gonna be a lot of people moaning, there's gonna be a lot of people that don't know where to turn, and you're gonna have to turn around. But unless you get this thing going, it's not gonna solve the problem. But I think it's a wonderful time. I congratulate the staff and, uh, and all those councils that put the work together, because this right now is probably the most needed project that this city has. Now, you're very lucky, this is gonna sound kind of unusual, but because the times are so tough, you got a heck of a bid on this. It's interesting that if you have money in times like this, you can get a lot of value for your dollar. I think Tiger's done a heck of a job to do that. Uh, Greg, you get out there and make sure that they give you every dime of it, and I know Greg will do that. But I just wanted to congratulate you. It's a, it's a, it's a wonderful thing, and you ought to have a party over it, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Any other members from the public wishing to speak? Then it's a time for council to deliberate, discuss, if you have any comments or questions?
Now, Mr. Mayor, before you entertain the council's deliberations, I could just point out a few items in the proposed resolution, a couple cleanup items.
Okay.
On the second page of the resolution, under the heading Due Process, as you recall, we were originally going to take this matter up last week. And so, some of the dates have changed. And so, under Due Process, um, that first whereas, it should read, uh, RGW and Tiger were both notified on or about September twenty-first that the council would be considering the various bid protests and the award of the contract for the project at the special city council meeting, uh, September twenty-eighth. Uh, in that second whereas, under Due Process, uh, again, the regular, the last line should read, "Special City Council Meeting of September twenty-eighth." And then, in the third whereas, under Due Process, again, in the last line, it should refer to a special meeting of September twenty-eighth. And, uh, also, just to clarify, there are three exhibits to this resolution. The first is the entire staff report, that is Exhibit One. And the reason that was attached is because the staff report includes, uh, as its, as its own exhibits, all of the letters that went back and forth, uh, between the parties. Uh, that's, those are Exhibits A through, uh, K. So, that's Exhibit One to the resolution. Exhibit Two to the resolution is a letter received from the attorney on behalf of RGW dated September fifteenth. Last exhibit to this resolution, uh, Exhibit Three, is a letter received from RGW Construction dated September seventeenth. So, that's all part of the, uh, the resolution. And lastly, um, I wanted to call your attention to the third page of this resolution under the heading City Council Findings. And, uh, this page summarizes a lot of the, uh, the information that Public Works Director provided to you this evening. And I think one of the, um, uh, the key items is that third whereas, under the findings, which says, "Whereas the deviation in Tiger's bid, the failure to list the bid item numbers along with the percentage of subcontracted work is not an error that made the bid materially different than intended or that would have entitled Tiger to withdraw its bid pursuant to the Public Contracts Code." So, that was one of the key items that the Public Works Director, uh, made this evening. So, with that information, uh, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you have.
Counsel? Questions or comments? For Steve?
Hi, Ben.
No? Okay. Okay. So, no deliberation from council? Uh, we're going to need to articulate our justification for determination.
I will address it for myself.
Okay, I was going to, but go ahead.
Uh, really, after a careful consideration and listening to the staff, as well as the advice, um, the legal aspects of this from our city attorney, it's my conclusion that the errors were, or the omissions were not material to the project.
I agree.
Okay.
Correct. I agree with you.
Okay, there was no error, listen just like everyone else. So, any other questions? If not, I'll call for a motion.
I would move to accept the recommendation. Do we need to do each one individually, or...
Um, no, ma'am, you can, uh, if you so desire, if there's no deviation from, uh, um, staff's recommendation, you could move to adopt the resolution as amended by my comments this evening.
I so moved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
And second, any further discussion? None? Ask for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, staff. Okay, next item is Communications. If none, we will adjourn to the redevelopment, redevelopment agency. Roll call, please.
Board Member Payne?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Any other comment?
I have a figure sheet.
Okay, if I could ask you to read off the three consent and agenda items, please?
Okay, number one is approval of the minutes of the meeting of September seventh, two thousand and ten. Number two is approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. And number three are the bylaws, administrative documents, and procedures, um, for the redevelopment agency.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, before the council calls, uh, calls on this, I wrote a comment earlier this evening regarding, uh, one of the, the resolution that's on your consent agenda this evening, and I just wanted to clarify that. Um, the redevelopment agency is a separate legal entity. And as a separate legal entity, there are certain procedural criteria that it needs to satisfy. For example, it needs to have bylaws, it needs to designate its officers, it needs to have a conflict of interest code. And these administrative items were taken care of back in nineteen eighty-one, when the agency was first formed, but they haven't been updated since that time. And so, when we were looking in particular at the conflict of interest code this year, which we're required to do biannually, we noticed that, uh, some of those items needed to be updated. So, that is the purpose of this resolution. It doesn't call for the expenditure of any money. It just, uh, designates in most cases that the documents that the city has as it relates to personnel rules, conflict of interest code, sequel guidelines, will in fact serve also the needs of the redevelopment agency. So, that's the purpose of the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Comment?
Uh, and this information in detail is available to the public if they, um, went to the city clerk and asked to read exactly word for word what these changes are, is that correct?
Um, yes, I, I think they're also on our website.
Okay.
They're also on the website under our packet.
Okay. I just wanted to make that point, if anyone really wants to know exactly what the details are, they are available to the public. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion, you pass the consent calendar for the RD, Redevelopment Agency.
I'll second.
Further discussion, none? No? Roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye.
So, we did this one separately? So, we're just in?
Kind of.
Hmm?
I said, "kind of."
Yeah.
I kept it with a...
Uh, okay. So, next? Adjourn and reconvene to the Gulf City Council. City Clerk's report?
Uh, actually, just a couple of reminders for tonight. The Gulf City Council Youth Committee will be meeting on October fourth in the City Hall Community Room at six P.M. And the entire community is invited to our Central Gulf Interchange Project Groundbreaking, which will be on October fifth at four o'clock on the corner of A Street and Camellia Way. We will be having a hot dog barbecue, uh, free for everybody. So, we're, everybody come on out and, um, I, shall I announce Dan Lundgren? Dan Lundgren will be here to speak, which was exciting to find out this morning.
Yep, I'm glad I could make it.
As well as all the other speakers, that are just as exciting.
Nice recovery.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Uh, staff report? Jackson?
Just a reminder. Just the, uh, another reminder, the, this, the last farmer's market is this Thursday evening, five o'clock on Lincoln Way. So, um, if you haven't had a chance to go down there, make sure you check it out. If you're a regular, make sure you don't miss the last one. It's been a successful event for the city, and I want to thank the participation of the Chamber of Commerce, the Shop Local Committee, and everybody else who was involved in making that a success this year. I think, um, it's been the most successful city farmer's market that we've had in the last three years that we've tried it. And so, hopefully, next year will be even bigger and better than what we had this year.
Absolutely.
Comments by council members? Vice Mayor Payne?
I would just, uh, report that I attended the League of Cities Conference in San Diego along with our city manager, city attorney, and mayor. And I attended several sessions there, I'm not going to go into each one, but I will try to put a report on my webpage for those who are interested. I attended one on, uh, gang intervention, uh, working effectively with the local clergy, uh, city branding, and, um, how to deal with the economy. And there's a lot we could talk about that. The other thing I wanted to, uh, mention, especially in view of, um, the guests we had tonight speaking about the youth, I attended a meeting called LEED, which is Linking Education and Economic Development. And, uh, they focused on future jobs, uh, in the public sector, uh, mostly, um, education, and also, you guys, the staff, you know what it looks like. It was very interesting, and, and it was also focusing on how we're gonna get our young people, um, uh, to qualify for whatever jobs are gonna be there in the future. So, I think that's my report.
Thank you.
I think I'm good, I'll pass it on to Mayor Lewis, I'm glad.
Okay, well, I also attended with Barbara and staff, and the theme this year, each year, they have a theme at the League of Cities, and it was rebuilding California from the ground up. So, it's very good. A lot of, uh, good speakers, a lot of comments. If you've gone to some of those before, you find it very rewarding and, and good networking with other elected officials and staff. I also attended, had the opportunity to go to the annual Old Car Show, the Gulf Area, uh, Car Show out at McFarland. You know, I think I said I would help them once, like, ten years ago, and I'm still there. Uh, other than that, it was a good time, good day, it's, uh, a good week. And actually, we're not going to close, we're going to reconvene back into closed session. We still have one more item, but, uh, everybody out there, you have a great week. Thank you.